At this time, I'll call a meeting in the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's welcome everyone here this evening. We do have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If there are no changes, we'll operate under that agenda and we'll move directly into Agenda Item Number One, which is to consider the approval of the minutes from the meeting that was held on February 11th. The council does have the minutes of that meeting. Are there any corrections to note at this time?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John to approve the minutes as they have been prepared. We'll move to a vote.
I don't have my vote in. Should've looked. Steven, what's my login? Wait, 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 wait. There's a memory. It's saved.
What's my login? Let's just put that out publicly.
Okay, we're good.
You were the IT person here. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll note one abstention. We'll move then to the next agenda items. We actually have two public hearings. The first public hearing will be the public hearing on the general obligation bonds. We'll conduct a public hearing. Following the public hearing, we'll consider the resolution approving the five-year street reconstruction plan as well as the issuance of the general obligation street reconstruction bonds. Jason, are you going to be conducting this public hearing? I'll call E.J. Moberg, Director of Administrative Services, to conduct this public hearing. E.J.?
Thank you. Before we get into the public hearing, I'd like to just briefly divert us to our current bonding plan, just to chat about those pieces that a couple of those pieces are on here tonight with their public hearings, including the portions that are, we'll call them more of a pinkish for the street reconstruction and then the part that's kind of a brown for the abatement issuances of the bonds. This is a plan on the far right column is our bonding estimate we got from Baker Tilly for those numbers for the share of bonding. We did have a work session on this plan back in January. So just want to touch base tonight as we're working with Baker Tilly and Bond Council to finalize our plan that we have, we staff does have some suggested changes at this time. Our airport reconstruction project for the hangar area is something we do not believe would be a 2025 project, so we would suggest taking it off the bonding list for this year. And then as part of our public hearings tonight, our street reconstruction hearing that we'll have here momentarily will be followed later tonight for awarding the bid on that. And the bid is less than what our estimates are were for this project. If you'll notice, the first column there shows that our total estimated project cost was $1,463,000. That number has gone down to $1,200,000-something. So I anticipate that we will probably lower the bonding number for that as well later, but for these purposes tonight. Now, if you go look to the far right in that same line, you'll see that the bonding portion of that is estimated at $935,000. That includes both the special assessment portion that would be paid by landowners benefited by this project via special assessments, as well as the property tax levy for the bonds, which is $658,000. So those two portions make up the $935,000. You'll notice that when we get to the public hearing, the amount we're doing is $1,350,000. We added $100,000 of room in case we had unfavorable bids. So that's what got noticed for the $1,350,000 and why we would recommend that one. The numbers above that for the abatement, when we get to that right after, those are three projects that staff recommendation would be potentially to remove those projects from now. The Liberty Park ban shell is something that we are asking the legislature for some dollars for. So until that is determined or decided, it doesn't make sense, in our opinion, for the city to bond for that at this time, as well as in talking with among staff, we've talked about possibly delaying the Independence Park back restroom project to a future year. And then Legion Field, just with some uncertainty as far as total value or dollars that'll be needed for the project, to potentially delay that at this time into what we'd have the public hearing tonight, but then potentially if council's agreeing with that, that we would then not proceed with that resolution. So ultimately, what we're looking at potential would be is our bonding would include the equipment certificates for the aerial truck, for the fire department truck, as well as the street reconstruction project, which I would estimate to be lower than what's listed there. And then we would keep the revenue bonds in for the surface water project of a phase three project over kind of by the unique apartments.
The surface water project does not have a levy impact, so it's comes, or the Legion Field project does not have a levy impact because that comes from surface water, correct?
That is correct. So that is not a property tax impact.
By eliminating those three items off of there, what, how's that percentage-wise take off the future levy increase?
So when we, when we talked at our work session, we were talking about if we did these projects as is, based on estimated interest rates that we would probably likely hopefully get, we were looking at an impact to next year's levy already of 3.24%. So by only moving forward with what's going to impact the levy of the equipment certificates and the street reconstruction project, we're now looking at about a 2.1% increase. So we're saving a little over 1.1% today. Now, some of these projects, like for example, the Legion Field, I want to go back to that one for the abatement. We're working on that Legion Field project. We do have some additional donation monies already, so that project can still continue as far as working through with the architect, getting plans in place. There may come a time yet this year where we pass a reimbursement resolution, potentially do the project, and just realize we're going to bond for it after the fact. Okay? But because we don't necessarily have numbers that we want to proceed with that project today, my recommendation later after, at that public hearing will be that we, if council agrees with these recommendations and decides not to move forward with that project, that we do not pass the resolution for the abatement project today. And we just delay that until a future date when it does come forward for this, this or any of the other projects that are currently on that abatement list.
Council have any other questions about the bonding list?
So the, in terms of this evening with the public hearings, we will proceed with the public hearings on the, the street reconstruction bonds. Secondly, when we get to the next agenda item, we'll have the public hearing on the abatement portion of the bonds. And we could have that, the, because it has been posted, E.J. will have likely the same recommendation that since the projects that would be funded from the abatements are being not acted on at this time, then we just won't act on the resolution. Correct?
Correct. That is my recommendation right now. Yes.
Sharon, anything you want to add?
Yeah, I agree with the recommendations.
Any other questions? If not, E.J., you can proceed with the public hearing.
Okay. So for the public hearing on the street reconstruction plan, this is for the project for South Hill, South Minnesota Street and Charles Avenue, as well as some of the two alleys that are behind there. So included in the council packet is the five-year street reconstruction plan for the city, which is a document that is required for us to approve as part of this or for this public hearing. The amounts in it you'll see are the, the amounts that engineering staff have put together for any kind of future project. These are not all projects that will be bonded. For example, the first section is for project year 2025 in what I'll call the pink that's on the screen. The only project that we're planning to include with bonding dollars this year would be the South Hill, South Minnesota and Charles Avenue project. These other projects have other funding sources and/or state aid or other things of that nature. We're not saying they won't go forward, we're just saying it's part of our plan as far as the five-year plan what's going to be done, but really for the bonding purpose tonight, the only one that would be funded is that South Hill, South Minnesota and Charles Avenue. Does that make sense? Okay. So then, so we're required to hold a public hearing on the plan and the issuance thereunder. As I mentioned before, the bonding portion of the total project, which is on this sheet as 1.6 million, if you remember on the previous slide that we had up, it was 1.4, and it's likely now down in the 1, 2-plus range. That's the amount that would, would go towards bonding this year as far as the bonding portion. And that includes both special assessments for the landowners as well as the future impact of tax levies. So then also included in the packet, again, and Jason would have more details of the particulars of this plan, this is the plan that some of these streets, as well as the alleys, will be hit with the Highway 19 project that hits through that area next, next year, so in 2026. So we can make an argument that it makes sense to get this done ahead of time so that that area is then cleared for the Highway 18 project and then moved on from there. So with the issuance of street reconstruction bonds, there is the potential for voters to, to challenge that by getting 5% of the, of the votes cast in the last municipal general election filed with the city clerk within 30 days. So information on that is, is part of the resolution. Any other questions on this as far as?
And the resolution does take a super majority of the council?
This does take a super majority of a two-thirds vote of those present.
Okay. Thank you, E.J. As part of the public hearing, is there any comments from members of the audience or any input from members of the council as part of this public hearing? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to close the public hearing. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. It does pass. So we'll now consider the resolution that would approve the five-year street reconstruction plan and as well as the issuance of the general obligation street reconstruction bonds. Are there questions about the resolution? Or the acceptance of, the approval of the five-year plan? If not, I would entertain a motion, we can do this one motion to approve the, correct, to approve the five-year street reconstruction plan and issuance of the general obligation street reconstruction bonds.
I move the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? There's no discussion. We'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. So we'll now move to Agenda Item Number Three. This is the, the public hearing regarding the property tax abatement as E.J. has, has described. So I'll call once again on E.J. Moberg to conduct this public hearing.
So again, this is for those three parks-related projects that were initially proposed for this year. The sum of those projects, when we look back on that sheet as far as the bonding impact, was $885,000. We did add $50,000 to that to make it $935,000 for this portion of, for this public hearing, so we had a little extra room. Excuse me. Again, our, the staff recommendation would be that these projects at this point be delayed and deferred so that we would have a public hearing to allow any public comment, et cetera, but then to not accept the resolution. However, if council decides to move ahead and approve the resolution, I do have a suggested change if we get to that point for, under the terms of the abatement as a correction. But the staff recommendation would be to see if there's any public input and then to close that public hearing, but then to not proceed with the resolution at this time.
And for the, the public that may be watching this online to further explain the delay, the Legion Field upgrade, we don't have a firm estimate of those costs yet because the architectural plans are not yet finished. On the ban shell project, the, we have a request in to the Minnesota Legislature that bills have been introduced in the Senate and soon will be introduced in the House for legacy funding, which the city has contributed to already of $795,000. Once again, with this project, we would need to have some final estimates and design before going out to bid. So it's, you know, it's clearly premature right now to issue bonds. And the other project, the bathroom project, would just be delayed to coincide with, with the other bonding. So with that, I'd open up for any comment as part of the public hearing, either from the audience or input or comment from the council as part of the public hearing.
If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Amanda, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. The recommendation, as we know, is to not act on the resolution that would approve the, the property tax unless there's any views to the contrary from the council.
I think this is a good time to delay this and make sure that it's cost-effective for our taxpayers as we go forward.
Any other input? If not, we'll move then to the next agenda item, which, thank you, E.J. Agenda Item Number Four, which is the South Hill Street, South Minnesota, Charles Avenue reconstruction project. We have the resolution first declaring the official intent regarding the reimbursement of the expenditures with the proceeds of tax exempt bonds. And then following that, we would have the resolution that would accept the bid and award the contract. So with this, I'll, I'll call on Director of Public Works, City Engineer Jason Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. This project is a complete reconstruction in the streets and the neighborhoods that you just described, Minnesota and Hill Street between College Drive and Charles Avenue and Charles Avenue from Whitney to Minnesota, and also including the two alleys in that neighborhood as well. Purpose of including the alleys is to replace the water main, which services all of those homes from the alley. On February 12th, we did receive bids for this project. We had three completed bids and they're shown in the bid topulation. The low bid was submitted by D&amp;G Excavating of Marshall in the amount of $995,695.25. This is just under our engineer's estimate. We did have three really good bids, all really close to each other, which suggests the project was clear and we had some, a good bidding environment. You do have the couple resolutions included in the packet for your consideration. The total project, if you include the 5% allowance for contingencies and 16% engineering fees, is $1,212,756. All costs would be assessed in accordance with our special assessment policy. There'll be cost participation from wastewater utility, Marshall Municipal Utilities, Surface Water Management Fund, special assessments, and city ad valorem dollars. I can answer any questions if we, if we have them.
Any questions for the public hearing for Jason? If, if not, this is not a public hearing. I misspoke. Any questions for Jason? If not, we'll move then to the, the resolution that would declare the official intent regarding the reimbursement of the expenditures with the proceeds of tax exempt bonds. Questions about that resolution?
I move the resolution.
Motion by Craig.
Second.
Seconded by C. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. And the second action would be to the resolution that would accept the bids and award the contracts to the lowest responsible bidder, which is D&amp;G Excavating.
I also move that resolution.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion does pass. Thank you, Jason. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Five. This is also the award of bids. This is for the construction of the restroom facilities and the picnic pavilion at Independence Park with the recommendation to award this project to Bladhome Construction Incorporated of Marshall. With us tonight, Preston Sendrude from our Parks Department. Preston.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have the recommendation for award to move forward with construction, like you mentioned, of the new restroom and shelter picnic pavilion at Independence Park. Back in 2000, that's about February 2023, we submitted a grant application to the DNR as part of their outdoor recreation grant program. We were awarded that in 2023, also in July. Didn't receive a final contract from the state until July of 2024, which led to some delays. And now getting the project out to bid through three local general contractors with meeting the specs, we, we took bids last Thursday. And Bladhome Construction submitted the low bid, which would include the assembly of the new shelter and the full construction and the new bathroom. Back in August, we awarded them, purchased the shelter kit. It's here, sitting in the park shop parking lot, all covered in tarps and stuff until we're ready to move forward. So we have those additional costs. I do have some little bit of new information just today from when I proposed this memo or put this memo together on Friday. Worked with Dave Schelkoff over at MMU this morning, and he said MMU would pick up the share of doing the water line for the park. So that takes care of that 17-ish $1,000. And then also, because we're over our grant amount, the demo of the existing structures is currently prevailing wage. If we pull that out, it's about $1,100 savings, which puts our net shortfall at about $18,000 instead of the 36 that I was mentioning in there. I did work with E.J. last week after we got the bids, and we would still like to recommend moving forward, as we know, like I said, we got the grant, it ends this year, so if we don't use the funds, they're gone. And we already have the shelter here. As far as touching on the finance part, E.J. said he would gladly help with that, so.
I just have one quick question for Preston. So if we remove the demo, who's taking the shelter down?
We, we'll have a contractor provided that price. It's just right now their price, it's not in, it's not in the main bid, I just got quotes. But I had them do it as prevailing wage, assuming it would all be in the grant. But now that we're over, we can just pull that out and pay them direct and not get reimbursed, but it saves us a little bit of cost, so.
Okay. Other questions?
Not a question or comment. I really appreciate the fact that Marshall Municipal Utilities stepped forward to do that water line. I understand they're typically, they, they don't do work on private property, but this to me fits that for them to, to help with it because it's all on city right of way. So I really appreciate them showing that participation, that that's very valuable and appreciated.
I agree. We have a good partnership, so.
Yep, that's excellent.
Preston, you want to make any comments about the, the schedule, the timing? This is a busy park during the summer, lots of activities?
Yeah. I've already, actually, Matt, talked with Greg yesterday at Bladhome, not getting too far ahead because he didn't know how it would go tonight. He's proposing to start May 1st, but we were talking about not removing the shelter too early if we knew we weren't going to build the new one right away, so we want to fine-tune that. The bathroom itself is going to go just north of the existing bathroom, so we'll be able to construct that, leave the existing one open and operational, and then take it down after the new bathroom's built. So the shelter kit itself looks like it wouldn't take a long, I mean, a terrible long time to put up because it's all pre-manufactured with the holes and everything to be assembled. But we do have concrete and electrical work and stuff. But yes, we want to have as least impact on the park as possible, but knowing there's not a good time to do it because it gets used all year, so.
So potentially by early June, maybe, it would be available?
Yeah, I would, I would say, yeah, month's probably a good time. Got to let some concrete cure and stuff like that. And then the bathroom, he put a proposed finish, complete everything by October 1st, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Preston? If not, you have the recommendation, but are the wishes of the council?
I would make a motion that we go forward or approve the bid and go forward with the project.
I'll second it.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion?
The only thing I'd like to add is, I know it's over budget, but we'd lose $200,000-something. So it'd be kind of foolish not to move forward with this, even though we're a touch over budget.
Well, and that bathroom's in need of replacement and that shelter's dangerous, so it's time to move.
I'm the liability of it, too.
Yep, time to move.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion does pass.
Thank you, Preston.
Thanks, Preston.
Agenda Item Number Six is the consent agenda, and we have no items on the consent agenda this evening, so we'll move then to Agenda Item Number Seven.
Do we have to approve the bills and project payments?
Yes.
Okay, there is one item then.
The.
Steven was panicking there for a second.
I have to mail my checks tomorrow.
The, the one item on the consent agenda is consider the approval of the bills and project payments. Any questions?
I want to remove that one for, no, I'm, the consent agenda.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Okay. Now, Agenda Item Number Seven, the request for a conditional use permit for a duplex in R1 District. The location is 212 Carroll Circle. This be presented by Ilya Gudman. Ilya?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is a request for a conditional use permit for a duplex in the single-family, low-density residential district. This house was built in the 70s, and it was used most of the time as a single family, but sometime recently, maybe several years ago, it started being used as a duplex. And the reason we kind of learned about that was that they did the right thing, they applied for the rental registration. So now, in order to give them rental registration, they need to bring it back into the compliance with the ordinance, meaning that they have to have a conditional use permit for the duplex. You can see on the map that it's right behind the general business district, and there are several, very close, there is another R2, R2 district. So it's not a unique place here. You have a resolution that includes some finding of facts and explanation of those things. That, in Steph's opinion, it meets all the criteria that the ordinance imposes on approval of the conditional use permit. So the recommendation is to approve it. It went through the Planning Commission, through the public hearing, and the recommendation was also to approve it.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments from the Planning Commission?
No, not really. There was no concern from the public and no concerns from the Planning Commission.
Any questions for, that the council has?
I don't have questions, I have a comment. I think this shows that we as a council and the city, as you apply for these rental ordinance or the rental license, or you want to call it, we're not out to try to shut your business down. Let's get them into compliance and get our rental code up and running. And this is a good example, our city uses common sense.
Exactly.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Thank you, Ilya. Agenda Item Number Eight, consider entering into a professional services agreement with TKDA for engineering, architectural, and planning services for the airport. I'll call once again on Jason Anderson. once again on Jason Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. So we've recently requested qualifications from consulting engineering firms for airport engineering and architectural services for the next five years, from 2025 to 2030. FAA requires this process to be done either on a five-year term or per project. We've always elected to go on a five-year term so we can work with the same company for a long period of time and have some efficiencies there. We did receive submittals from both TKDA of St. Paul and Bolton &amp; Mink of Mankato. Both were very good proposals. The Airport Commission did meet and discuss this on February 4th, and at that meeting, they recommended that a RFQ review committee be put together, and that committee met on the 19th of February. The RFQ review committee did recommend to move forward with TKDA unanimously. We've worked with TKDA since 1992 at our airport, and things that were stated by the committee were valuing that experience, that long-term relationship, and also valuing the partnership with the current staff that we're working with at TKDA. In the packet, you do have a professional services agreement to consider. We did give that to our city attorney as well, Pam Whitmore, for her review, and she and I spoke, and she's comfortable with the agreement as presented. We would recommend to enter into this agreement, understanding that there's no cost with this agreement. The cost comes when we bring a project forward, and those come before council every time.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Any comments from the Airport Commission?
Yeah, just quick, and thank you, Jason. I was also on the review group to look at the proposals. And, you know, both of the proposals were very good. And again, like Jason said, you know, Bolton &amp; Mink also put together a very good proposal. The city's had a good history with Bolton &amp; Mink. But looking at similar projects and the contacts, and then our experience with TKDA, the scoring was, I believe, probably very, really close. But there's just a little bit more of a relationship with TKDA. Their fitting, their involvement with Men.Dot Aviation and with FAA and the project, things that we're looking, that we're facing in the work that they've already done. I think it's just a better fit. And I think it's always good to let both parties know that we're looking at who else is out there. I think it just keeps everybody sharper. And, you know, it's certainly not a vote against Bolton &amp; Mink. We've had great success with them, and I know we use them a lot in our public works projects. And so I think this is just a good relationship to continue to move forward. And the commission really supported it 100% to do this.
Thank you, Craig. Any questions from the council? If not, you have the recommendation. I would entertain a motion.
I move approval.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Nine, consider appointments to various boards, commissions, and authorities. The council earlier this evening met in special session, interviewed applicants for both the Marshall Municipal Utilities Commission as well as the Planning Commission. Based on those applications and those interviews, I would recommend that Jeff Holcomb be reappointed to a second full term on the MMU Commission. That term is a five-year term, so it will expire May 31st of 2030. And that Sarah Runche be appointed to a first term on the Planning Commission. That is actually a three-year term. With that, I'd offer that as a recommendation to the council and entertain a motion to affirm.
I'd make a motion to affirm.
Second.
Motion by Amanda, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. So we'll move then to Agenda Item Number 10, Commission Board Liaison Reports. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Airport Commission met, and we dealt with that business tonight. So that's all I have.
Amanda?
I have nothing.
Amanda?
Planning Commission, we covered the only topic from this week, EDA, exciting information that that former shopping mall building in Marshall's is opening April 24th, and they are now again actively recruiting for a third tenant. So hopefully somebody gets put in there soon.
Very good.
Rumor that they had some delay, and it was going into May for Marshall's.
Why are you starting rumors?
Well, I was in, I was, I was in the other occupant of that building.
Ah.
And that's what they told us.
Well, as of the last EDA meeting, that was last week.
I just heard they ran into a snag, so you'll have to run that to ground and report back.
I will. We will.
I think April 24th is the grand opening, correct?
That's what we heard, but if there's new information, we will.
I would check into it. I know how rumors get started. This may be exactly following that, but, but, but a very, a very good source at Harbor Freight, who people could go into Harbor Freight and check with them, too, if they'd like. I'm sure Harbor Freight wouldn't mind.
By a little on your way out.
Told on Sunday at Harbor Freight that there was a delay. My wife was going on about how excited she was, and she goes, oh, yeah, unfortunately, they ran into a snag, and it looks like it might be the middle of May.
Good to know.
Yeah, we'll see.
We'll, we'll.
Check on it and report progress.
We'll report tomorrow at State of the City, hopefully.
Ah, there you go.
Be nice to have the right information.
Yeah.
Mine, boards have not met since we last met. John? See?
Uh, Diversity Equity Inclusion Commission met, and we had Julie Walker come and present from Marshall Pride Celebration. And then we are also changing our decision-making rules to like a consensus, a little bit between consensus and a loose version of Robert's rule, so that it is less intimidating and more welcoming for anybody who wants to be on the committee. And then Conventions Visitors Bureau, I was unable to attend.
And Jim?
I was unable to attend. MMU and the other two have not met.
We'll move then to council member individual items. Craig?
Nothing, thank you.
Amanda?
Nothing.
Amanda?
Nothing.
Jim?
I would just say with the warm weather, drivers, please be cautious of people out walking because there's going to be more and more of them, such as myself.
Stay on the sidewalk.
Well, or keep the cars off the sidewalk, but just be cautious of people out and about with the warm weather.
I don't have anything.
John?
Nothing.
I have just a couple of things. First off, we do have correspondence from the city administrator to Sheerholdson Associates. And of course, there also was the receipt of the closure notice that has been received. So when we get the staff reports, both Sharon and city attorney Whitmore will discuss both of those in more detail, including the schedules that. And then the second thing that I'll talk about, and I normally don't talk about groups that I have spoken to, because there's quite a few, but I want to mention two that happened within the last week. And one was the Hill Street Place Men's Group. I spoke to them last Thursday. It was scheduled for a half an hour, and this is a really engaged group of men that are there, and it was an hour and a half discussion. And so it was really kind of gratifying that they're that engaged, that they're so knowledgeable and interested in everything that's going on in the community. I know they're watching tonight, so that's one of the reasons I mentioned that. So secondly, the, over the weekend, I had the honor of welcoming the Lyons District Committee or District Convention to Marshall. So there was at Everspring, which was the host for the event. It was a full, full group. They were here for three days. And I mentioned that, you know, as you, when you would talk about the CBB, this is one more example of, you know, bringing a group in, and they're filling hotel rooms, they're enjoying the community, and the community did a really nice job of hosting them. So I mentioned both of those things. With that, we'll move then to staff reports. Sharon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just want to cover a few things in March and then talk about Broadmoor Valley in conjunction with the city attorney. March 5th, we do have scheduled union mediation with, with the Ask Me Union. It has been delayed in order for us to find a date that works for both sides. So I just want to give an update on that. I think I've been doing that previously, but it's, it's only been delayed because you have to find a date that works for both sides. There's no issues that I'm aware of, and hopefully we can resolve it on that particular date. March 11th, we do have the bid opening for the Aquatic Center at 2:00. There will be 17 different bid packages because we're doing the construction manager route. And I've been updating the Aquatic Center Committee just on, you know, interest so far, and I think we're feeling pretty good about it. So hopefully, hopefully that energy will keep going forward with a successful bid. And of course, if the bid opening process is favorable, it'll come back to council on March 25th for your consideration. One other thing in March as well, this year, the city is trying something new through community education, which is a citizens academy. A lot of cities do something like this. It's mostly tailored to our police departments throughout the state, but we really wanted to expand it and talk about all city services. And so we actually start on March 31st, and it's a seven-week program. And we've got different departments helping us out with that. So that'll be a good program. We limited it to 12 registrants the first year, and we'll see how it goes and consider it for future years if it's really successful and, and there's good, strong interest. Now just to Broadmoor Valley, the city did receive two correspondences from Broadmoor Valley and its owner, Paul Sheerhols. One was a request for funding in the amount of $2 million. And my, my interpretation of the letter is he was trying to support an additional request to Minnesota Housing Finance, and he felt that funding from the city in the amount of $2 million would help support that additional funding request. We are all aware that the funding levels at Minnesota Housing Finance is a little tighter in the last year or two. I think it would be challenging with or without city support. But at the same time, and I did include for you past letters of support, we have committed support to the first grant award of a half a million. And that was for some infrastructure work in conjunction with the road improvement on the first Minnesota Housing Finance grant. So I did provide to you a declination letter on his request, simply because we don't have $2 million available to provide support. I will include our past letters of support indicating our previous support level in terms of funds. And I guess the, the question for council, and, and again, I'll have Pam help me with this, is, is hopefully you're okay with that. If not, certainly we can speak up and, and, and maybe we could talk about it further. I want to cover a few dates as well regarding Broadmoor Valley. We did receive a new closure notice from Mr. Sheerhols, and our city attorney, in her opinion, did deem it valid. And based on her interpretation of the statute, and just taking a closer look at that, we would take it to the Planning Commission on March 12th, who would thereby likely recommend it come to city council because that would be the, the, the normal route for this. And we would then request that the city council, which would come on March 25th, that request would set a public hearing date. And so that's kind of a, another correspondence that for council, are you okay with a declination letter? Do you need further information? Something for you to give us feedback on. And Pam, what would you like to add in terms of what's happening with Broadmoor and other information?
So city attorney Pam Whitmore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Council. Good evening. So Sharon did a good job of covering with respect to the new statement of closure. We did receive that. Previously, we brought that right to council as the final decision maker, as the, in planning. The statute does specifically state to go to Planning Commission to make a recommendation for council. So we did take a step back and follow that process this time, which is why it's going to Planning Commission. They don't have any discretion on whether that comes to you or not. The statute is pretty clear that it goes to them. They receive it, and then they recommend that it comes before you. As a reminder, the job of council upon receiving that from the Planning Commission on the May, or March 25th meeting would be to set a date of public hearing. So as we were doing, as we did before, we're looking for spaces to be able to accommodate that hearing. And again, as another reminder, we are the facilitator of that process. There will be a third party who is appointed by you, the council, at that meeting to, to hear from the residents and make some decisions with respect to, to that closure statement and what needs to happen. So that was, that's just a reminder of that process, since we had started it and then it had gotten stopped. We have not heard from the AG with respect to this notice of closure. I will let you know that there is a separate lawsuit that is unrelated to the statement of closure that we received but is relevant to it. The Minnesota Housing has independently started a new action against Sheerhols and Associates. It did get, ended up getting filed with Ramsey County. I was waiting for that. So that happened on February 6th. Judge Ireland was assigned on February 12th. There hasn't been anything that's happened on the docket since the 12th. But the, the lawsuit alleges anticipatory breach of that grant agreement that was received by Mr., by Sheerhols and Associates. And this, this notice of closure is being argued by Minnesota Housing as an anticipatory breach of the condition of that grant, that it stays open for 25 years. So that's the crux of the lawsuit. There's also a portion and a claim under the lawsuit that talks about and alleges improper rent increases. And so there's relief that's being requested by Minnesota Housing from the judge for back payment and, and injunctive relief about increases in rent. So that is what the lawsuit alleges, and we'll see where that goes. I don't have the answer to the question of if that will impact this hearing process that we will be following. So we are going to, just as I said, the staff stay in our own lane, and we're in charge of the process for that, for that hearing. So until we are told that it's not appropriate to have the hearing, we will be moving forward with that.
Thank you, Pam. We'll open up for any questions that the council would have, either on what Sharon has presented or what Pam has also discussed. Any questions? Okay. Sharon, do you have anything else?
No.
We'll move then. Jason?
Next week, on March 4th, we open bids for the Mill and Overlay Project. That would come forward on March 11th for your consideration. Also, next week, on March 6th, we will open bids for the AT, the Active Transportation Grant Project, which includes the RRFB at A Street and 59, the RRFB at County Road 7, and the trail realignment, as well as the trail extension along kind of Aldi, along 59 between Boyer and Windstar. Lastly, on March 6th, we have a pre-construction meeting for the College Drive Project, so that's starting to kind of ramp up.
And when do you anticipate that would start, or maybe you'll know more after the pre-construction meeting?
You know, I think we'll know more after the pre-construction meeting, but in talking with Eric Hansen on our team, I'm pretty sure it's the first week of May, but we'll, we'll hear more. And you'll, you've all seen the notice of the tree removal that's, that's beginning now, so.
And that's going to basically start on the west half of the project for 2026 or 2025, and then the east part would be the second year, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Everything west of the big intersection downtown for 2025 is the plan, and they've kind of given us some preliminary phasing that I'll maybe wait and shore up at this meeting before I announce it, but yeah.
Very good. Any other questions for Jason? If not, If not, we'll move then to, Pam, do you have anything else? We'll move then to the.
No, thank you, I'm.
We'll move then to the remaining items on the agenda, which includes our report of cash and investments, our listing of building permits, and our listing of upcoming meetings. Is there anything else to come forward this evening at this meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John to adjourn. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
I'm glad you got a vote.
Start all over.
And we'll close the voting. The motion does pass, we are adjourned.